Good evening, and welcome to the April 13th meeting of Pembo K-12. I call it order at 7:01. We do have one member through remote participation, Susie Scholl. Everybody else from the committee is here. We still will take roll call vote, but we won't have to do a pretty bunch view of the window. So also remind folks at home, if you have questions during the meeting, scinfo@pembroke12.org. At some point I'll remember what it's called. If you have questions, again, we'll try to get to them in real time. If we don't, and it's an issue, we'll follow up, or we'll try to go back to it if it's a critical issue. But other than that, we will try to do everything we can in order to make sure we get engagement from the community, which is important to us. So just against the agenda, there were none unless you had anything in the last couple hours. Communications, group of those schedules. Okay, consideration of minutes for March 30th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
Seconded.
Okay, motion by David, second by Jim. Any discussion or questions? Okay, let's go by roll call. Lance?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Susie?
Answer.
And yes. Also remind folks that this meeting is recorded mainly for the purpose of our minutes. It's posted to the website generally 24, 48 hours after the meeting is completed. So with that, we will get to a return to loan update, and then go into budget.
Sure. So I'm just going to give you a quick update. I know we're noticeably missing Lisa Cullody this week. I'm happy for her that she has a week away from us, but I'm sure I'm not going to give the update as much justice as it deserves. So our numbers in the town continue to trend in the direction that we would hope for. Our numbers are starting to come down. We did have that little bit of an increase three weeks ago or so. So I'm going to talk just mostly about our school numbers as town numbers are Lisa's wheelhouse and not mine. So this past week, Pembroke returned to the yellow designation. So again, on the slides, you can see what the stoplight metrics designations are for the color codes and what they support as far as a learning model. So we are back to yellow after two weeks in the red, and our numbers this week are trending in a direction where we would continue to be yellow with Thursday's reporting date. Going back's not an option, so maybe. Natalie, can you put it back up? Thank you. We're texting technology here for the first time ever. So just our color coding, again, we did spend two weeks in the red. As we've talked about in meetings past, we talked about three weeks in the red being a point where we'd want to get together and maybe have a conversation, look a little bit deeper at the numbers, and see if there's any movement that we want to make on our learning model. Even in our weeks in the red, I did share with you that our student cases weren't at a place where I would recommend changing our learning model, but I am thankful that the community as a whole has now shifted back to the yellow designation. As far as our student-specific data, we currently have 10 active student cases, two at the high school, five at the middle school, one at North, and two at Bryantville. One of the big questions that we get a lot is the number of students quarantining. So again, the number of students quarantining isn't something neither Lisa nor I are comfortable posting to the website because it is a very fluid number, and in many instances, our numbers at the elementary level are identifiable because our students that are quarantining are often our only students that are absent. I can share with you currently, as of today, we have no students at Habermock quarantining. We have one student at North quarantining. We have 38 students at Bryantville quarantining, but we do have a second and a fourth grade there that are remote. They switched to remote with the classroom-based exposure last week, so 35 of those quarantining children are 100% remote with their classroom teacher. We have 11 students quarantining at the high school, and we have 35 students quarantining at the middle school. We talked a little bit last week about what we were seeing happening at the middle school with some youth sport activity and some outside-of-school plans with folks. So that number is starting to come down, and we haven't had an increase in new cases there associated with either of those events. We do not have any current staff cases across the district. That's it for what's going on with us health-wise. I do just want to remind folks, if you are traveling, that you do need to get a PCR test if you are leaving the country. So domestic travel does not require testing to return to school, though we are asking families to still get testing. And the test of preference for us is the PCR test. We continue to see a whole host of testing abnormalities with the rapid antigen test, and are requesting that families get the PCR test. We've had a lot of conversation this week around what quarantine instruction looks like for our students. Again, at the elementary level, it's a little bit easier to think about logistically when the whole class is quarantining because the teacher then delivers 100% remote instruction. At the secondary level, it doesn't necessarily happen as full classrooms, and there's students in several classes that are quarantining, and that work for those students is asynchronous work with an opportunity to check in with their classroom teacher each day. Again, with a large number of students quarantining at the middle school, we've gotten a lot of feedback about that model and access to support for those students. So I know that Don McGaragle and Tom Walsh are looking at a better way to set up the structure for families and an easier place for them to find the information on when teachers are available, instead of needing to troll through each of the Google classrooms to see what the times are that folks are available. And we've also started to talk with the teachers about a better way to organize the support. So this is our first time that we've had a large number of students quarantining at the middle school, again, relative to events outside of school. But I don't think the structure that we had in place was necessarily the best for the end-user experience. The teachers are available for support, but finding the time, the times that they're available, coordinating with the other 12 kids that are in that same class, I think is logistically something that needed some improvement. So we are working on just streamlining the process for families, so it's easier to follow when students are quarantining.
Questions for Erin on the numbers at all? Susie, anything from you for Erin on the numbers?
No, I'm good. Thank you, though.
Great. Yeah, I think just the message is, please, over vacation, take care, especially of the older children. I mean, I think we're all seeing the same thing in the news. The numbers of 30 and below and 20 and below are increasing, not just increasing, but increasing with regard to hospitalizations. We're going to make it through this. We need people to, you know, be smart. Obviously, live your lives. People need that social engagement. I think we all know. I think that's one of the things we look at and why we're staying in school, why we push to get to school quicker, but we just want to be safe. The numbers of quarantining students are, you know, it's bigger, I think, bigger than we would like, but we'll manage, and we just want people to be safe. So please.
Right. One of the other questions that I've been asked is, is there a specific number of students quarantining that would trigger a switch to remote? There isn't a specific number that we have in our minds. When I look at the number at the middle school as of today, less than 10% of the student body is quarantining. To me, that's not a lever enough to switch it to remote. And even at our highest number of quarantining at the middle school, it was 18% spread out across the two grades. So, you know, but we do look at that. We do look at, you know, the best way to deliver the support to students and to deliver the instruction and to, you know, cause as little hiccup as possible in their instruction.
I think everybody understands the importance of keeping the students in school to their ability to learn and their social, emotional health. That's why we've been as aggressive as we can about getting in school and staying in school, and we're look at multiple numbers, right? Public health spread within school, thankfully, we haven't had, and then overall community spread. But so I think we've said this a lot. I don't know if there's anything else to say.
Erin, do we have to report to DESE on a regular basis how we're doing as far as in-school versus--
Yeah. So we report to DESE anytime there's a student case, when the student has been present in the building while they're infectious, and they manage that data, also with staff, as well, so students and staff. And they report that data weekly. Their data is not necessarily aligned with what we're reporting. Their timing is off a little bit, and then they consider any student that hasn't been in the building while infectious not as a current student case, so.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Anything come in for questions on this?
Nope.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on the budget, and we're going to talk our annual fee discussion. So what I would ask, because fees cannot, should not be taken, at least my suggestion, is not take them individually, let's hear the presentation of all of the fees, then make the determination if there are any we want to take off the table and change it or anything, and then focus on the ones that people are interested in having a deeper discussion to go up, down, whatever. It'll make, I think it'll make the conversation a little bit more streamlined. Fair enough?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
So the first fee in your packet, in no particular order, is the transportation fee. What you have there is a summary of what surrounding districts are charging for transportation. The models everywhere are a little different. Some folks don't offer transportation at the secondary level or only offer it at the elementary level at less than, or over two or less than a mile and a half and whatnot. Some folks have a family cap, some folks don't have a family cap. So what you see there is just a sampling of what's surrounding us. Just as a point of clarification, districts that are regional like Silver Lake or Whitman Hansen don't charge for transportation because they get federal or state reimbursement for transportation. So you can see there, our individual transportation fee is $200 with a family cap of $300, and we do have a early discount for payment. At the bottom of the slide, you can see some scenarios. If we were to raise the caps for individual and family in various levels, so $25 for individual, $50 for the family cap, or $50 for the individual and 75 for the family cap. And then, because this is my 11th time having this fee conversation, there's always somebody that asks a question about what if we were to reinstate the elementary transportation fee. So that there, that $40,000 potential revenue generation is an estimate. That's based off of that year that we did away with the fee, the refunds that we sent out for that. But again, running buses at three tiers. So having buses that transport to the middle and high school, Habermock or Bryantville and North is the most efficient way to run buses. The elementary route at North allows us to run a lot of our buses as a third tier. So there's some economy of scale with running it that way. So the revenue generated from that, if we were to charge for transportation, fewer families would most likely access the transportation, and we'd be running fewer three-tier buses as opposed to two-tier buses. So that is an estimate of what the revenue would be. But again, we'd need to know exactly who's going to choose to continue to ride with the fee if we were looking for an exact number on that.
Do we know what percentage of our families use the transportation or pay for transportation?
We sure do.
And to build on David's, this year versus a normal year?
Right. So I did want to talk a little bit about--
Well, yeah, you're going to think in a COVID situation--
Right. I wanted to talk a little bit about how I, what numbers I used for the revenue at the bottom. So I took a five-year average of ridership-- So I took a five-year average of ridership prior to this year and used that and did adjust slightly for the fact that there is potential for us to be in some sort of restricted, restricted transportation place come September, though I think we're all hopeful that we're not. There is some chance that we will be. So just adjusting the number slightly downwards from our five-year average in order to put some revenue estimates on there. So we have, our five-year average of families riding the buses, 214 families accessing the bus, that that's about 439 students. And we have, on average, 540 individual families riding the bus. So we're just over 1,000 students of our 2,400 that are in person, that are using the bus transportation.
That's out of 2,100 roughly?
2,400 or so. I take off the specialized students that have specialized transportation.
Jessica's going to probably answer my next question. How many parking spaces do we have access to here for students?
I think it's 150?
Yeah, ballpark, I mean, I don't think that's a big-
Yeah, I think it's 150.
Karen, excuse me, can you repeat David's question? He cut out.
David was wondering, his first question was how many families or students are accessing transportation, and then the second question was how many parking spaces do we have here? I'm just going to figure that out quickly.
That's the part I missed. Thank you.
Yep.
What was the last time we increased the transportation fees and how much was it?
Two years ago?
Two years ago, we went up 20.
You went up last year.
And you went up 20?
$25, so.
Yeah. So last year, we ended up having the fee discussion twice. Once pre-March 13th, once post-March 13th. We made the decision as a committee not to make any changes to fees because the economy went down very quickly. The economy's changed, but it also is not where it is at pre-COVID levels completely because I think a lot of people know and a lot of people are still feeling. So that's, that's kind of where we were. Give you a little bit of history on the elementary number. There were two, so we did have an elementary fee for many years. We started it in 2005, I think was the, we got hit with a million-dollar cut post-budget certification and we had to scramble and that was one of the things we did and we kept it in for many years. I think we took it out while you-
Nine years ago.
Nine years ago. And Patrick Schilkow was the big driver of that. The reason why, you know, he drove in, there were two drivers to the conversation when we did overturn it. Number one, because it's less than two miles, some people are paying, their neighbors are not, right? Literally house to house that we had that situation. That was one thing. And the second thing is where our elementary schools are, they're still within, there's not two miles of sidewalk when you look at any of them. You're dealing with students on main roads, Bryantville especially coming off of-
27.
Coming off of 27 or 36. Clearly that here, two miles gets you going onto Habermock, right? We don't have to, north, the same thing, it would put you onto Pleasant or whatever. So that was the drivers, it just wasn't safe and those were unduly impacting those families. So that was the reason why we took it off then and we've kept it off since. Just give a little bit of history.
And the exact number of parking spaces is 185.
185.
There we go. Thank you.
How many are being used?
186.
It doesn't include the junior lot.
Yeah, based on coming in the morning, all of them.
All of them are being used, yes.
Can I go one more on the parking space thing?
Yep.
Any idea how many are on this side of the street versus the other?
So we don't have any parking spaces on the other side of the street.
But people just park there.
So that is the unapproved junior parking lot.
Ah.
But we only have spaces on campus for senior parking and then if there are additional slots available, they do a lottery for junior parking, but that parking over there is park at your own risk.
So you're not getting any money?
We don't get any money for that, but we're also not responsible for upkeep or plowing of that. And there's some logistical concerns there with the water tower and access for emergency vehicles out there as well, so. You know, we do get many calls the first time it snows and it doesn't get plowed.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions on trans, additional questions on transportation? Susie, anything, other questions on transportation?
No, I'm good. I can add that Dick and Erin prayed a little bit on some of this, but she hit on that during this discussion, so thanks.
Fantastic. Okay. Athletics.
So athletics, again, similar chart. Athletics is one of those fees that varies widely depending upon where you are at on the South Shore. So here is what surrounding communities are charging for sports. You'll see some do a one-time fee like we have here in Pembroke, some do a per-sport fee, some have a ginormous family cap, some have no family cap. What you have at the bottom there is just the, again, revenue generation estimates if we were to increase the fee, $25 for an individual, 50 for a family, 50 for an individual or 100 for a family. One of the questions that comes up each year is around some of the similar setup to Cohasset or Whitman-Hanson where they're paying per sport and an additional, you know, $50 for a second sport or whatnot, and what would that look like if we were to do it here? A lot of the conversation in the past has centered around would adding a cost for additional sports prohibit kids from trying something that they wouldn't normally have tried? A lot of our kids participate in spring track because they've already participated in a sport and it's almost like free, right? So it's conditioning for that and we don't want the numbers of students willing to try something because there's a fee associated with it to drop off.
Questions on this one? Susie, anything on athletics?
Yeah, if you had to say, Erin, who we demographically most match with, you know, where would you say we land? Whitman-Hanson or more like Silver Lake?
So Whitman-Hanson and Silver Lake are, you know, pretty similar to us. So Silver Lake's fee's $300, Whitman-Hanson, if you were going to play all three sports, is $350. You know, I think those are reasonable places to be. I shudder at the thought of my kids in Hanover playing sports because it looks like it's going to cost me $1,000.
You don't have too many friends.
Now, and I've got several years to go, but I guess that's not as bad as the $1,325 you could spend in Norwell. So I do think we are low on sports, but, you know, I think-
We also have good numbers.
We have healthy enrollments in our, or healthy participation in our sports. Again, to figure out the generation and user fees, there's a slight dip in sports this year, again, associated with COVID, so we used a five-year average to look at that. I think in our community, youth sports in Pembroke, the fees associated with playing a youth sport have gone up over the past few years. And so once families are getting to high school, it's almost like a deal to be able to play three sports for $225. But I don't know kind of what the appetite is in the community or amongst the board for an increase there.
Do we have any kind of a hardship?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Susie.
Yep. So we do have a hardship. So any family that qualifies for free and reduced lunch just lets us know and it is, they just write us a note and it's a waive, the user fee is waived. And then for those that don't necessarily qualify for that but have extenuating circumstances, same system, they reach out to Brian and we waive those fees.
Yeah, I think David hit it on the head. To me, sports is an outlet for our students, especially now with all the things they're going through, to have that opportunity. So it's important that if you're participating in something, you have a stake in it. So I think a fee is important, right? But access is just as important and so hearing that is good because having the ability to do both, I think, is important for us, so.
I can tell you, just based with my kids here, I don't think any student that ever wanted to play was denied the opportunity, so, which I think is great. And I think, I even go to the other side of, yeah, we've had cut sports, but which is unfortunate. However, there are lots of non-cut sports and, you know, we had great experience within the track program where it's every student is treated the same, right? And it's, you're going against yourself and I think it builds a lot of self-esteem and I think it does a lot for the school community. The one thing I will mention with our athletic fee, because it is, it ends up covering about 10% roughly, a little bit less-
A little bit less there.
-of our total cost of, to run the athletic program. So it's not as though we're making money off of it or we're taking big numbers off of the budget. They're also within that, actually, it's even less because we are making our turf payment out of that.
Right. So we increased the fee $25 a few years ago, the year of the turf.
To try to help for the note of the turf fee. And there's a potential for us to do some of the bus payment out of this athletic revolving. The reason why is PM1 and PM2, we used a lot for athletic transportation. It keeps athletic costs for transportation down, also gives us flexibility. So if you think of, the track program has done Dartmouth really several times. We've been able to use our own bus, which saves a ton of money versus hiring a private bus for a trip that long, which does include an overnight. So stuff like that, it's, it's not just putting the students on the field, it's other things that we pay for to add in, so. Worth mentioning, I thought.
Great.
Other questions on athletics? Okay. Facilities usage.
This is kind of a boring one. There's not a lot here. You know, we don't, you know, there's not a lot of people reaching out asking to use our kitchen. We have a few classroom users, so in traditional school years, the driving schools use a classroom. You know, that are, we talked a couple of years back about private musing lessons, they use a smaller classroom for that now that we've, we've put that back out as opposed to in-housing that activity. You know, the biggest request is for use of our turf in our fields, but because we use them so much and youth sports use them so much, there's not a ton of opportunity for outside groups to get on them. So you can see down the bottom that we only charge usage for categories four, five, and six, so that's anybody that's for-profit and we don't have a lot of that usage on the turf. The only piece here that does fluctuate year to year is that custodial overtime piece. So if youth sports, even if it's youth sports, uses our turf but needs access to our building, we do charge them the custodial fee because we need to have somebody on-site for them. We do update that each year to account for the increase in the custodial wages, but other than that, there's not a ton of exciting places to go here.
Probably was our annual revenue from this.
This year, zero. In years past, we have had a couple of summer programs running out there, anywhere from, you know, $6,000 to $8,000 in a good year. There's not a lot of usage.
So where are we, where are we, Erin, with the COVID restrictions on using our facilities?
So our facilities are closed to the public during the school day, so we don't allow outside visitors into the building. We are still having, all of our non-essential meetings are still virtual, so PTOs, boosters, all of that is happening virtual. The only time our buildings are open after school is for athletic events as defined by the criteria for EEA. We are just starting now to dabble in those other events that happen at the end of the year, like national honor society inductions and commencements and sixth-grade promotion nights, but we do not have any outside groups using any of our buildings at this time.
Yeah, in the past, we've had some basketball usage-
We've had some youth basketball in AAU, yep.
And we've viewed the auditorium dance recitals.
Right.
So there's been some, I mean, we're not making tens or, we're not making hundreds of thousands, definitely barely making tens.
Right. And no, no dancing school has a, dance recitals are generally a June timeline. Nobody's approached us looking to have a 100-person event, I mean, so.
Yeah. And the reason why we have the two different rates for custodial is to cover benefits when it's an outside organization versus in-town, we're just, it's just the hard dollar cost is what we're charging for, what we've charged for in the past.
Cool curriculars.
Cool curricular fees. So this was a new one for us, just starting a couple of years ago, looking at what surrounding communities were doing associated with clubs outside of sports. And, you know, we were looking at all options to generate revenue a few, a few years back. We haven't taken any action on co-curricular fees up to this point, but here's a sampling of people that do charge a co-curricular fee and what that fee is. I just want to clarify, there are some places that charge for marching band. We would be unable to charge for marching band because marching band is a class here. So if you look, let's say at Abington, marching band has no in-school component associated with it. For us, we, again, obviously have a marching band component to an in-school core, so we wouldn't be charging for that. When we've talked about some of the scenarios here, we talked about wanting to set a fee in a way that it wasn't prohibitive to students because we do have some clubs that have eight kids and they run, and it's the only thing that those eight kids are involved in. And we want to make sure that we're not creating a system where those kids aren't necessarily our kids that are going to be vocal and ask for a waiver of the co-curricular fee. We want to make sure that they still have an opportunity to be engaged in something and have some connection here at Pembroke High School. So a few years back, I think we, might have been last year or the year before, on the $25 being just kind of like a token fee associated with participating and then capping it at $50, as few groups that we have and that are the eights and the tens, we also have lots of kids that do lots of things and we don't want to charge $25 every time they do best buddies and whatnot. So keeping a $50 cap, I think, still made it manageable for our students and we didn't think it would prohibit kids from joining multiple, multiple activities.
In some clubs, DECA, there's, there ends up being a component as they compete. They're in DECA and they compete in the regionals, they're paying, you know, for some of the fees associated with it, mainly to stay overnight when they compete. So it's not as though they're not paying in some regards for pieces of these clubs or-
Right. Anything above the stipend for the advisor for these clubs is, is covered by the students in the club. So, you know, if there's an event like-
But they'll raise money too.
Right. They do some fundraising.
Questions here? Susie, anything on co-curricular?
I think just for those that are listening, Erin, can you go over how many clubs we currently offer and how many students are actually participating in them, maybe in total?
Sure. So this year, again, is the year of anomalies. Generally, over the course of the school year, there's anywhere from 35 to 40 clubs that run at the high school over the course of the fall, winter, spring, including some of the thespian groups, Ultimate Frisbee, Math Leaks, Amnesty International, it runs the gamut. We have, of our 800-person student body here, more than half of our students participate in at least one club. That may be the art club, that may be, you know, a DECA or jazz band. But this year, the numbers are lower, so we're running about 20 different club offerings right now. We did start virtual earlier in the year and a few of them have come to an in-person meeting. This year, there's probably about 250 kids that are participating, give or take, but again, a year of the anomalies.
And, and we're currently not charging a fee, or did you say we are?
Correct. We do not charge anything right now.
Okay. That's, oh, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Why don't we move into the last one? Yeah, parking fees, parking in preschools.
So David took all the fun out of the parking. There's 185 spots here at Pembroke High School. If we charged $50 a spot, it would be $9,250 of revenue. There are some communities around us that charge for parking. We've talked about this a lot as well. I think when we're charging a fee for something like parking, it represents a commitment to some level of service. Those of you that drove into Pembroke High School tonight for the meeting know that there's some road hazards there in the parking lot. You know, I feel, I feel as though charging for parking, we would, we would need to do some stuff a little bit differently with upkeep and maintenance in the parking lot. Brian talked a little bit about that during his maintenance plan. We also were approached by the PTO here at the high school a couple of years ago with a fundraiser idea of letting students, seniors, paint their parking space as a fundraiser and I feel as though, you know, that might be a better way to generate money from the parking lot as opposed to the institution of a parking fee. Norwell is my favorite parking fee. It's $25 for street parking and $50 for parking in the lot. So that would be if we were going to do junior versus senior parking here. It's very interesting.
And then they got that drive-in coming into that.
Yeah. It's free if you want to park down by the library.
Yeah. Back by the tennis courts, we don't charge for parking.
Right. We actually mentioned that the first couple of years of Pembroke High School, when there was no student parking on the facility because of the construction, they did park down by the tennis courts. And we actually ended up having, because there was going to be no parking at the school, we ended up charging a parking fee, but we also had people out helping students navigate through. So that was, more to offset the, the cost that we had, and that was a long time ago. We since haven't.
Who's responsible for the road parking lot repairs? Is that on us or is that on the town?
That's a very interesting question.
The road or the parking lot?
Both. I mean, we're a town facility.
Parking lot is-
So we are a town facility. The DPW doesn't have or receive funding to maintain our lots. They do receive funding for, let's say, Learning Lane or Pilgrim Road. So anytime we've had a sinking drain or, or, you know, a large pothole, it's been on us to fix it.
Yeah.
But I do think if you're talking about a larger scale, like repaving of the parking lot project, that's something we would partner with the DPW on as opposed to a one-off, you know, fixing a drain. So overall, maintenance in the parking lot falls to us and we're doing an excellent job with it.
Well, I'm just wondering, if we raised the $99,250, you know, does that kind of cover our maintenance or is that going to cover repaving by any stretch of the money?
No, so we spend about $6,000 every other year to paint the lines in the parking lots. We have a number of the drainage bins that are sinking. I think at, at North are some of the worst ones. And to have those repaired each time, it's about $1,000. So that's covered in our maintenance budget. But we don't do a lot of maintenance on the parking lots. We do wait until, you know, can't be avoided, just because there's no, there's no, you know, funding associated with it.
Other questions in parking?
Preschool, I just put in here for informational purposes. This is our current fee structure. We have a five-day, full-day program where we charge $5,500. There are no comparison programs to that in local school systems that I would use as points of information. It is an excellent program that we run. I think it was need and interest driven from families. It's a great alternative to a daycare setting, but, you know, it behooves us to have kids in our buildings earlier, getting used to schools' routines and regimens as they then join us for kindergarten. The four-day program is more of the traditional half-day, peer-based special education program, which you see in a lot of districts. There's not a lot of fluctuation in that dollar amount. That dollar amount is figured based off of what a half-day kindergartner is valued at in the Chapter 7 day formula and adjusting it for four days instead of five days of education. So that $2,200 is pretty much the going rate for every school system around, give or take $10 or $20, depending on where you're at.
Do we get to count them for the Chapter 7 funding or no?
No, so if you collect tuition from anybody, they don't count.
Okay.
So our students that are joining us for preschool for IEP reasons are counted in the formula, but our peer models are not because we're charging a tuition.
As I thought. Okay, no, any questions in this? Suzy?
Nope, I'm open on that one, thank you.
Okay, so there were six items presented to us. Any issue if we just take facilities and preschool off the table?
Sure.
No issues with that?
Nope.
And we can focus on the four and then we'll walk through those. Suzy, okay with taking facilities and preschool off the table or have to?
I am.
Okay. Now, let's just figure out, because, so back up one step. Right now, if you look ahead in your packet, or if you look ahead, that we're trying to solve for $269,000 by the deficit. Any fee increase will go dollar for dollar against that $269. We're not going to balance the whole $269 off the fees. It's not practical, it's not probable, it's not sensible, it's not a lot of many, it's not many things. So that is, we know we're not going to do that, but there's clearly a, a chance or an opportunity to take away some of that, more based upon, again, you know, being fair and equitable. So let's go through the other four and just make sure that we want to get them on the table so we can at least have the committee understand. Because if we start talking about bus, but then we don't consider bus versus athletics versus whatever, one of the things that we've talked about a lot of times is these tend to be high school or secondary specific. So you're hitting the same population multiple times if we, depending upon how we do it. So take that into consideration. That, so rather than saying we're going to talk about bus fee and then athletics, I just want to make sure we at least get the, we at least get the population of, that we want to talk about before we finish.
Well, three out of the four are-
What's that?
Three out of the four are directly high school. Right, athletic, co-curricular.
Bussing, bussing is the only, well, bussing is-
Bussing, well, minus the elementary.
We only charge secondary.
Right, because you have, well, so technically, I guess, yeah.
It's, it's middle school, little school.
But there is elementary on the table, so.
Yeah, it's on the table. True.
Just by, why do we only offer a 30% to $30 discount on secondary?
We don't, that's a typo. So we do, we offer a $30 discount for both elementary and secondary for early payment.
Oh, okay. I didn't remember that part. I'm saying, okay, I want to go by.
So based on that, does everybody, does everybody want to talk about bussing or does somebody want to include bussing in the conversation?
What do you think, bussing, regarding transportation?
Transportation, sorry. Bus.
I, I think we should include it, Mike, because we seem to be out of sync with, with most of the communities around us.
That's fair. I just want to get the population of what we want to talk about because we can't take these individually because we'll just keep, again, on that same population. Athletics?
Again, I, I, I think we probably need to consider it. I feel like I'm the, the bad guy.
No, you're fine, no, I, I, I don't disagree with either, I don't disagree with either one of them. I just want to make sure at least one person wants to have the conversation. Now, here's the, here's the one that I think we have to have a debate or discussion over if we want to include in a co-curricular. We talked about it last year, we were going to move forward, we decided to back away. One of the reasons why it went many years until last year without any type of discussion was because of exactly what Erin said. We did not want that one student with their one-touch point potentially in the schools not doing it because of a fee. Now, you can argue what was proposed is nominal. Perhaps, I don't disagree with that, but just let's figure out, is, is this something we want to include in the discussion or not?
Yeah, I, I think we include it. I mean, I, you know, I think we've got a couple of ideas that we may be able to get creative here without going overboard.
Perfect. Yeah, it's good, it keeps us moving. Parking. Thoughts there?
I mean, I'm always one to go with, to look at what our peers are doing and look at comparables. So the fact that, you know, we haven't done it in the past, but pretty much everybody else does, you know, if you're a junior and senior in high school and you got a car, I mean, you know, maybe there's a, a cost associated with that. So at least let's talk about it, Mike, let's throw it out there.
Fair enough.
So I'm sorry, Suzy, go ahead.
No, that, I was inclined to, to lean away from that one, but I certainly am happy to have the discussion on it.
Let's put it this way, if one person wants to have the discussion, let's at least have the discussion and then we can determine what we want to do. I just didn't want us to talk about something that nobody was in favor of and just, again, focus the conversation. So with that, is there a, should we take them in, in order, but take a vote at the end? Okay? That need, that way we're just going to be comprehensive. Does anybody disagree with that approach?
No.
No, that's good.
Okay. Okay, so transportation, thoughts on transportation?
Well, I think that potentially has the greatest impact, right? You have potential to get those dollars from that, any adjustments that are made there, so.
Well, here's my thought, if we, if we raise it $50, okay, we're still giving people a prompt paid discount of 30. So indirectly, we're raising it 20 bucks. I don't think that's a huge jump, per se. I don't know if I'm reading that wrong, but I mean-
Well, the 30's still been now, so there-
Right.
Yeah, so you're assuming, because if the person didn't pay on time last year, you're trying to get them to pay on time this year, right? So let's actually, and there's a, there's a reason why we have to pay, want them to pay early is because it makes Lori Jacobs' job a lot easier instead of-
Sure.
Bus routes, right? Any, any bus passes out, like, how many communications go out the first three days before school and the first three days of school?
And we have to pay for those little passes and mail them and all that, all that stuff.
Question, Erin, just for clarification purposes for the committee.
Sure.
What, how, what percentage pays the early discount?
So we didn't have an early discount this year, just because of the timing associated with it. The previous year, our registration system changed a little bit, so the window for an early discount was smaller than it has been in the past. But I would say about 40% of families access the, 40 to 50% access the early paid discount. Then there's people that just assure us that they postmarked it by that date.
But, you know, in, in our business, we, we give people a day or two window. You know, we're not totally crazy about it.
Not here.
But here's a quick question, and I don't know if it'd save us money, per se. Just, I live on West Street, nice home, kids, whatever. It absolutely amazes me that the bus will stop at the top of Cedar Terrace, Oak Terrace, and Tool Trail, when the distance is right from here to the other end of the room. And we're talking junior high school kids and high school kids. I would think if we put them all in one stop, now the bus is stopping once. As opposed to, let's pick up a kid, drive two houses, pick up two kids, drive a house, and pick up three kids. And I'm not sure if that's the right-
So believe it or not, we get a lot of feedback on those group stops and where they are and where they are not. So Lori, our transportation coordinator, works with first student as well as the Pembroke Police to identify where is a safe location for stops and for a group of students to congregate based off of the busyness of the street, whether there's a turn, an intersection or whatnot. Some of the kids that are walking from the end of some of the cul-de-sacs to the top of the road, it's quite a walk for them, depending on which subdivision that they're in, which also determines whether or not there's a stop in all of the places or not. But the, the bus stopping, I don't think is what takes the time. It's the loading and unloading of kids. So there's a minimal time savings between stopping and letting two kids on and stopping and letting two kids on versus letting four kids on in one spot. It's just, the time that's taken for the student to get up the stairs and get seated in their seat, it's not the actual maneuver.
The guy in the car behind them while they stop.
It's not the actual maneuver of the bus, right?
No, I just, I just find it kind of bizarre that, you know, you've got three, you can't just-
Right, also, five years ago, after an accident that happened with a student on the corner of Shore Edge Drive, it might have been longer than that now, looked at our bus routes and we don't allow students to cross in many locations any longer, which infuriates families because the bus drives by their house to come back around again, both on the way in and on the way out. But it, it was a safety concern. So the Pembroke Police do identify the, the streets in town, which crossing safely cannot happen for students as well.
Yeah, I, I definitely see that part.
But that added time to a lot of our routes as well.
Yeah.
So given that, I mean, I, I'd like to just consider that we have an increase, that we over-communicate the early discount. And we try to solve for, you know, a percentage of the, of the deficit.
So before we get to motions, is there, do you have an idea on the number? Jim, the reason why is let's get an idea on a number, let's go to the next category, get an idea if there's a number or not, and then, and then we can go back and kind of just look where we are total.
Do you want to just, we could just say, here's a suggestion of the number, we're not making a question for it.
Where are we going directionally so that we can continue to have the discussion? Because we could come back, right? We're, we're taking this one first and we go all the way through parking, we could come back and just change directionally where we want to go before we get to a motion.
So I guess I'm saying I'm just in favor of an increase as long as we continue to promote the early discount.
Which, absolutely, yeah.
On, on transportation fees for the upcoming year.
Thoughts on where we are with anybody, 25 or 50, if there's a thought of an increase?
I have a thought.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think, I think we're going with the increase and I, I like that David reminded that there's the early discount, but I'm still thinking of the impact of COVID on so many families. So a $25 hit or, or taking it up a little bit higher, I think it's still going to be a little bit easier for them to absorb. We're still going to run the, the, have the opportunity of getting a revenue increase, but I, I just think taking it to a, a higher dollar amount might be difficult for, for a lot of the families to really count on this transportation, but have had some, some impact and need some time to recover. So, and if we're going to be increasing a few fees, I, I'd like us to be thoughtful about how much we're going to hit certain families.
Sure. Any other comments or questions?
Sort of just building on that, I think you're going to find parents either going back to working in their offices and other things where transportation is going to be even that more important. Where right now, parents have been able to get away with being able to bring their child to, to school. So I think having, not overburning the families, I'm with Suzy on that one, that we've got to find that balance, because I think our ridership will go up for, for need purposes.
Yeah, I would agree. I think, I think what we see in September is going to be a lot different than clearly what we saw in last September, but what is, which June's going to look like, where offices are talking about opening. If they're not opening for September, they're opening for October, right? They end at Q3 versus the beginning of Q4. I think that's what a lot of firms are doing, so that, excellent points. Anyone else, Jim or David, on this before we move on?
Nope.
Okay, we'll come back to this in a little bit. Athletics. Any thoughts here about increase, no increase?
Hey, Suzy, I'm, I, recognizing I was trying to keep it low on transportation, I'm, I'm inclined to go with the, the entry-level increase on the athletics as well.
You know what, I don't disagree, and there's, there's a couple of reasons why. Do you think athletic fees are going, athletic portion of our budget does go up at least at the same pace as the rest of the budget. Official fees are going up roughly 2%, I think is next year. Those are voted two years ahead of time. Including the, the coaches' payments are going up by whatever's in the collective bargaining. And we do see other costs with sports going up, whether it be the equipment cost, we heard the whole thing about the uniform replacement, we went off-cycle, we need to get back on cycle, you know, and some of the other things. I'm not, yeah, I'm not, again, a huge fan of, of just feeding people to death, having paid them for them. It's, it's something where, again, where I think we're out of market a little bit on this one compared to our peers and also, which isn't a bad thing, right? We're, we're in the low end, that's a great thing we can do for our families. But do you think, yeah, we can, we, there's some room here?
I agree, because I, I was, had the uniform piece in mind. I have to go back and look at the budget to see where that lands as far as a priority, but I know it's on the horizon. So if we can help put a little dent in that without craming the families at the same time, I think that would be helpful.
I would just suggest keeping PCMS at the $100 if we're looking at this, just because the number of sports, the number of opportunities are lower, meaning the number of sports and the number of contests, so.
Well, and balancing it too with multiple sport.
Yeah.
Support that.
More opportunities.
I agree.
Anything else? Great, okay. So we passed facilities usage, let's go to co-curricular.
Here's one that, that I've thought a little bit about, Mike and Erin. Would it be, would it be feasible to say that of all the clubs and everything that we think we're going to offer over the next year, that the first club, there's no charge for? But then as students think about a second or a third, then we build in a fee? Has that ever been thought of or? I, I know that, I don't see anything in, in our peer group here that has done something like that.
Jim, I was thinking the same exact thing.
Because I know we have a lot of kids that do two or three and it's just, it's just kind of how they, they operate. They love doing a handful of things. But this way, you're not going to disadvantage a student that just wants to participate in one, go down that road, have a great time doing it, and again, it's not going to be a burden for a family.
I was thinking first club free is what I was thinking as we were going through that. We didn't consider that last year.
No.
But when, when you talked about the fact, and again, we've talked about this, that that could be that one club that the student's in, right? We've had, over the years, you look through yearbooks, you'll see some of the clubs, you'll be like, okay, that ran this year, that didn't run the following year, right, because of student entrance. But then you see and you're like, hey, I, I know that kid. And, you know what, that's the only thing they're doing or, or something. I think it's a, I think it's a good thing. If we can do the first one for free now at least, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to think about it.
So-
I like that idea. But how would the cap be modified if we did that? Or at all, would it be modified at all?
At least still cap it at 50.
Yeah.
I would even think first one free and just, they, again, just, I would say to try this rule to sell, we'll see what kind of feedback we get, but just say second and or third is just a $25 charge.
And would the fee come into play after they've attended X number? Because a lot of kids will try it and decide that, well, you know, I went to the art one, I like that, but I'm not sure I'm into the robot one, and they kind of step back. So are we going to have a timing associated with the fee?
I would say that we should probably say after a certain number of meetings, right? So our, some of our clubs meet months a week, some meet twice a week, but I think we'll set, and that could be part of the handbook discussion we have this summer with the high we have this summer with the high school around where the fee kicks in.
I, I think that would be, be a good idea, just because I know, you know, sometimes they don't know what it is and they want to go. I'd hate to hit them with a fee because it's their second or third one they're looking at early to find they step away. So, and I think from a financial or administrative perspective, that'd probably be a lot easier to manage if it kicks in after a set number of meetings. Thanks.
I mean, that's really what clubs bring, right? Opportunity to try something new, so we don't want to hamper that. So whatever our structure is, we want to set that.
Well, something, the first one for free, Jim, is a great idea. And then we just charge 25 bucks. You know, next year, let's see what happens. If we have to go to 50, whatever, I don't want culture shock from people. So, okay, the second one, 25, the next one, another 25, then, you know, you're, you're parents, you know, swallowing hard, let's put it that way.
We, let's, the other thing we want to look at, what it does, does it impact engagement? Right. Do our numbers go down? We're, we're saying 50% participate now, does that number drop to 40? And if it does, how many of those kids, you know, did that, didn't do it the year before, kind of look at cohorts.
Yeah. You'll even see years worth of debt of charging a fee. But I just think jumping to 50, zero to 50, I'd swallow a little hot of that, I think.
I think, I think so.
You know, 25 bucks.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I, I, I can live with that, that's a little bit of a commitment.
What's that, six spicy chicken sandwiches, I think?
Yeah. How many Mary Lou's does that break down to?
Just, just for, you know, where, thinking about revenue, if we're going to go the $25 for clubs two and beyond, I would half that potential increase to 6,000, I don't think.
And last, and then I want to take a second, do you live with math real quick? Parking.
How long have the parents been talking about doing this painting fundraiser thing?
So we started talking about it, I don't, in my mind, I count this year as a not year.
Yeah.
So we started, started talking about it about two years ago. The timing of the conversation was after seniors, after parking spaces had been given out that year. So we talked about doing it for the following year, and then some of the board members on the PTO here turned over. Some of their oldest children graduated, and so there was a new board. So there's still an interest there, and we've done all of the work associated with what is the right type of paint so it can be power washed off at the end of the school year, and it's not a permanent fixture that would then re-dur our cost to, to remove, so.
Except we endure the cost to, do we have a power washer here on site? Do we have to pay a staff member to?
The custodians are here all summer, looking for great fun things to do, you know?
Get it tanned.
You know, we also have kids that need community service hours, so, yeah, great community service there.
And I hear.
Do you think the two have to be mutually exclusive? Like if we recharge a parking fee, would that promptly deter buying the decorations from the PTO for the same parking space?
Right, so the. Yeah, so the way the PTO would work is that you would pay whatever, let's say it's $25 or $50 to paint your parking space. And then there's criteria that are acceptable and not acceptable for the space. The materials, the students will be purchasing a specific type of paint to, the PTO is not providing the paint. So I would, I would think if we did one, that the PTO would be less inclined to try to double down on fees associated with parking in the same year.
Okay.
All right, so.
And I know a couple of meetings ago, we talked about the maintenance aspect of the parking lot. And recognizing a fee may infer a servant from our end to the person paying the parking fee. Do you think there's value to waiting to do a park, a fee till we kind of get our hands around the specifics? Or maybe a more solid understanding of who's going to do what with this? And, and, you know, I, there's a part of it, kind of like, I thought we were going back to talk about some of the expenses of that when Brian was talking about it. So, you know, I guess I'm trying to weigh, I'm not sure where I am on this. Because I, I, I think we need the revenues, but at the same time, I'm wondering if there are pieces of this that, that would come into play that we aren't considering yet.
I think from a end user expectation, if we were going to charge a parking fee, I think there'd be a large push from the community to have assigned parking space for students. That creates a logistical concern if you're, if you, you know, there's some Hunger Games-like activity happening in the parking lot to get here and get early enough to have the store closest, the spot closest to the door. I think, you know, we've done a great job here at the high school in the past four years of reining in student tardies. Again, this year is an anomaly. But I would fear that with assigned parking spaces, that kids would fall into their routine of I don't have to rush to get there because my space is going to be open. You know, I'm just worried about some of the unintended consequences.
Did we have assigned spots?
We haven't had assigned spots in a while here.
About five years?
I would, maybe, maybe more than that.
Yeah, I don't think we all make those assigned spots. So the other potential behavior happens is somebody says, I'm not going to pay, I'll park across the street. I mean, it's, it's less likely, but it's still. Thoughts on what we should do here?
How many cars can they cross the street and accommodate? Because, right, they'll be able to say, I'm not going to pay, I'll just go across and they, they meet their special friend and.
You give that to.
Well, we don't maintain that law. My question becomes the enforcement of.
Right, but what happens if you show up to school and there's no place to put the car? You just go home and take the day off?
Well, as long as you don't oversell the law, if we.
We wouldn't, we, we don't, they don't now. So even though there's not assigned parking spaces.
Yeah.
You're going to give out so many placards, and you have to have a tag, a lot of hanging on your where.
Who checks those?
Oh, they check those.
Oh, they do.
Oh, they do, and if you don't, you get detention.
Ooh, nice.
And I'm talking the overflow lot.
Right, the junior parking lot, so I think it's.
Paying a fee, then we have an empty lot up top, and everybody's down there on the hardwood field.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a highly probable incident, but it's, it's some of it. I mean, I think just.
I think people are going to pay to park, you know what I mean? It's just, if you can pull up, meet to the front door, or you can walk a quarter of a mile, I think people are going to pay.
Yeah, for 50 bucks for a year, you know, when you break it down and, you know, the convenience of the.
It's not, it's under a dollar a day.
Yeah.
So if it was, if it was 50.
It's like 30 cents a day.
Okay, would we then consider? Would we then move to consider assigning parking spaces? Well, that would be a mark question.
Yeah, I think we want to go back to administration and get some feedback from Aaron and Mark on that one.
I, I don't think we should assign the parking unless you want to pay a little more for a better space.
VIP parking, right?
Oh, God.
So, yeah, I mean, my experience in high school, we'd pay for our spots. You, you put your, your name went in a lottery, and then the numbers got drawn, so it was even, right? And you got what you got. We had numbers on all our spaces, and that's just what I'm used to. But, so I would say if we're charging a fee, you want some equal balance, so I think you would need to do something like that.
So the tag would mark, would mark the space.
You have to mark the space on the ground, so we have an additional fee.
Right, you'd have a cost of numbering all, all your spaces.
Keep some of this in perspective, and since I, somebody just texted me, in 1991, they paid $60, or $65 a year to park for the year. That's 1991. And I guess the second thing, because, you know, I see $50.
Susie, how much did they pay to ride the bus in 1991?
An average American spends about $20 a week on drive-through coffee. And I run a Pembroke Education Foundation, fundraisers based on that thing, can I just not buy your coffee this week and give me $5? So I guess, I'm trying to keep everything in perspective. And, and you, David, you mentioned the Mary Lou's, I, I mean, I live near Mary Lou's, and I see the line every morning, and I go, oh, there's coffee, they're ahead. So.
Two coffees, it's a noise.
With that in mind, yeah, the $50 isn't painful now as I think about it. So I'm just going to throw that out there.
Okay, so let's, let's just, so while we're thinking, or where we are, just let's save that. Wait, first of all, any questions?
Uh, no, I'm in the mailbox, so I'll tell you.
Okay, so if, again, if people are home, you can seinfo@. Okay, seinfo@pembroke12.org. Just real quick, and we'll take the question in one second. Just to give everybody an idea where we are, we're talking about raising transportation athletics and co-cur, sorry, raising transportation athletics by $25 each, co-curricular and instituting a fee for 25, institute a parking fee of 50. For a family with one child who would hit all the fees, right? This year, they would have paid, or a non-COVID year, they would pay 425. Now they would pay 550 if that's a family is a senior, a single student senior, they would go from 425 to 550. The family cap, and it's, okay, so the family cap would go from 735 for the, actually, sorry.
So if you're paying the parking fee, you're not paying the transportation fee.
Right, that's, so you go back off.
Right.
If you're doing one, you're doing the other.
You're doing one, you're doing, correct. Well, when you get the family cap, you may be.
You could be, right, you could be.
Because if, because you may not have your high school senior dropping off your eighth grader.
Right.
I've lived it. They won't do it.
Yeah, it's not cool.
So, sorry, so if you look at it, your current family cap is 685 for transportation athletics. Transportation athletics and now a co-curricular, that goes to 885. If you have a parking fee, it goes to 935 max. That would be the max any family would pay. Because one thing we have not ever considered, and this does create a bit of a bookkeeping issue because of the revolving accounts for transportation and athletics, would be, do you look at a family cap for all fees? Because you're talking, if you institute, if we institute all of what's been here, you're talking for a family. And we do have families who will fit into most of these categories. Not a lot, but we do have some that will end up seeing a big jump from potentially 735 to, I'm sorry, 685 to 935 if you go through.
I just took 935 and divided by 185 days of school, that's five bucks a day.
Understood, I'm right.
No, I'm just saying, so.
David, the good news is we only go to school for 180 days.
Well, but I don't build in 185 and give us no days, whatever, so it is, I, it'd be less.
So do you have a question or comment?
I have a couple of comments. First, regarding the clubs. I just, just some food for thought. You know, I had a son who was in mathletes, and that was a big, it wasn't like a lot of kids wanted to do mathletes, you know? So he would pull, when they had a competition, he would pull like people from other clubs to help out. And I wonder if you then put a fee on a second club, if that would reduce, you know, the amount of kids participating in the various clubs? So it's just some food for thought. For example, also, he, senior year, figured out that he was really good at robotics and never tried the club, but some other kids pulled him into that, so then he was doing mathletes and robotics. And, you know, there's a lot of really smart kids that might not do it because of the fee, and I just wanted to consider that. So that's the first part. The second is, has anybody considered, like, maybe some sort of a, you know, incentive for the good parking spots, pay a little bit extra, and then you get the premium spot for the year or something like that? Or maybe some sort of a fundraiser where, you know, I don't know, to, to get the premium spots, and those are the only assigned ones, and the rest of them are just the detail. Just food for thought.
Other thoughts here? I mean, we could take a motion to institute all four, or we can continue to discuss where we want to go. I just wanted to put the numbers on the table.
So Mike, if a family of five is participating, has four kids in high school, the max they're paying is 935?
Just looking at a family in high school, right, if they do a middle school sport, we didn't consider that, yeah. If, so that would be transportation max at 350, new transportation max at 350, new athletic max at 435, assuming they're not playing, paying, playing a premium sport, 50 for co-curricular and 50 for parking. But in that situation, that family better be driving, that senior better be driving the siblings.
So Mike, I think, I think we can make a motion on the fees themselves, but I think maybe we also need to have a discussion around having a total cap for everything.
We can do that separately, we can, we don't have, we could potentially not do that today, although it could have a budget impact. I mean, it's just, it's something, as we were having this conversation, and I was jotting down notes to try to see where we're going, it started to be like, it could be, it's going to be a shock if some, if we do all four of these at once to a, to a family. I, to me at least, that would be, we talk about being impactful, I'm, we're still dealing with it. So one second, Susie, we're still dealing with the effects of, in the economy of COVID. Some people, some people who are back, are back at full employment. They may be working, but they're not making what they made prior to March of last year. It's just, it's the way, it's the way it is. I understand the other pieces to it, but we just have to be careful of the whole population. Sorry, Susie.
Oh, no, that's okay. A question, kind of tied to that, knowing it's a hit. And recognize the, we pay some, we pay the transportation when we're doing our upfront registration before they step foot on the property. And I, you know, because I haven't had a sports person in a while in the house, do we pay their fee in front of, is there, recognize we have to get a, you know, potentially a thousand dollar hit in one pop? Do we have kind of a, a more of a perpetual payment that's spread out over the school year to kind of ease the burden? But I don't know what kind of strain that puts on the school district, so I just was asking, like our payment plans. So I guess I'm thinking layaway plan, you know, people can start paying in the summer.
Valid, it's a, it's a valid question. It would create an administrative effort.
Right, I mean, we do have the functionality within our accounting system to have people on payment plans like we do for preschool, right? We don't charge all of that as one fee, so.
Okay.
One thing I did, sorry, Susie.
That may help a little.
Sorry, I don't know if I mentioned, the total impact based upon what was presented to us and the adjustment for co-curriculars, if we went to one, paid for the second and beyond, was 40,825. If you look at charging for the first club out, you're probably looking closer to about 47,000. Kind of round it there, because I know you went 12 to 15. So if everything went in the way we're talking about it right now, it's 40,825 or 41,000. If it is where we charged for the first club out, it roughly 47,000 is what we would take off of the 269. And I can give you the breakdown.
I'm looking again, because when I added these up, I had transportation at the 18,250. The, the sports at the 8, 8375, the co-curricular at around 17,500. Are you talking, putting parking in there?
No, so a couple of things on that, Susie. Curricular, if we charge for the second club out, right, just for the second club, second club and beyond, it's a $6,000 estimation.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, if, what I just was, I put an extra 6,000 if we charged for the first club and beyond. Just to, just to get a round number, made that, made the total number 40, pardon, 47,000, and the parking fee is 9250.
Okay, and that's on top of the 47,000, correct?
Correct, yes.
So that's all.
All right, I just, I thought, so my numbers were off, if you were under 50 and you included parking, so thank you for clarifying.
We were looking above 55,000.
Sorry.
So I have 41,875 if you do them as presented, 25 for transportation, 25 for athletics.
Yeah.
50 for co-cur, 25 second co-curricular, 50 cap, and 50 for transporta, for parking. If you add the, go back to the original proposal of charging for the first club and say that's about worth 6,000, the total fees would be 47,875.
Yeah.
So we're under 50.
So based on that, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the increases on the fees as discussed, including the co-curricular pass for the first club, the payment for the second and third. So that would be the $25 for the transportation. It would be the $25 for the sports, and these are the individuals. It would be 25 per second, third activity for co-curricular, and it would be a $50 annual parking fee.
So the motion by Jim.
I will second.
Second by David. Further discussion.
So individualized score is roughly $75. If I'm a senior, I'm 125 a year more than the current year, correct?
Yeah, let's push all parking, just take it off because that's.
Parking, parking aside, roughly $75 with a potential of 100 if I'm doing a second club. Right, that's reasonable. I appreciate Susan's concern about, I think the club is still sort of a sticky point for me because that's, that's part of, to me, the continuation of your educational day, right? Not that, sports is as well, but this is sort of a direct way that kids get involved and try new things and that. So I'm concerned about the 50 cap. I like the 25, whether it's the first, second, whatever, and sort of keep it there. The overall impact is six grand. Yes, it helps. Is it, is it value added where I'm going to affect the students to a point where six grand isn't worth it? Maybe? So I think that's where I think about it. I do, I do think it's important that we put some stakes to it, that kids commit, right? So I think we need to teach them that lesson, because I've always, always found in my world, you need to at least charge $5 for a program because people won't show up. So, right, so you gotta, you want some skin in the game, so you want some commitment to a program. But we also need to be not making sure that we, we squelcher or put out any of the opportunities that could be there. So that's just thoughts there.
Yeah, we have the hardship mechanism in place if we need it.
So we need, yeah, and I don't know, I haven't been a part of that process to how is it conveyed and is it fairly clear so that kids can understand that and.
Right, and I think, you know, if we're talking about tapping into that co-curricular group, we can have all of the advisors explain that at the first meeting as kids are, you know, showing interest in clubs.
And you're saying cap the club fee at 25, whether it's for a second, third, well, first club is free.
At least for this first year, as we sort of work through that process.
I agree with that, I just want to make sure I'm hearing it. So we're saying first one is free, second one is 25.
However, you want to put the 25, just no more than 25.
No more than 25, yeah, okay.
I think that's a reasonable.
So 25 and 25, so 25, individual 25 family cap, is that what you're saying, Lance?
Well, yeah, I was understanding it was, if you did three clubs, you were, most were paying.
Okay, so you're talking, got it, you did the individual, so you're, you're, you're with the administrative recommendation of, I'll assume it's administrative recommendation.
Right.
Of 25 with a family cap of 50.
Right, sure.
Got it, okay, got it. Anything else? Other comments? Susie?
Trying to, I think, understand, and I'm sorry if my tone is speaking oddly loud, Vegas is calling, who knew? But thanks for your patience with me today. Quarantining is fun. But I thought Lance was looking at zero with a 25 family cap. So I'm, I'm not sure how we got to zero for the first, 25 still with a family cap, $50 family cap.
Let me see if I can paraphrase, let me see if I can paraphrase. Yeah, let me see if I can paraphrase, because I'm a little close to the phone, so you don't lose anything. Is, is, no, Lance is saying, let's just charge 25, a one-time $25 fee for co-curricular activities with a $50 family cap, whether they do 1, 2, 3, 8. See what happens, see what happens.
Wait, I'm not sure if I'm hearing that right. I'm saying the first one is free.
Okay.
Second club is 25, family cap is 50.
Okay, are you, that's what you want?
Yeah, to me, just.
Just, just keep it, you're, you're saying keep it at 25.
Yeah. Wherever the 25 falls.
Sort of the same thing, but it's just how the motion gets forwarded, got it.
Sure.
And it does impact, okay.
Right, because what, and I like what the free.
These tend to make people nervous. Also, people can be uncomfortable asking for relief for something for free. So, you know, the communication of that option is, is important. And I like the idea of that first one free, next one 25. But if you've got three kids and they're all in high school, you're still capping out at $50 for the family. Did I understand it correctly?
Correct.
Yeah, there we go.
I mean, the way it comes down to is on both, by the way, both of transportation and athletic, you're paying roughly one and a half times. You have two students, you're not paying two full fees, so.
And so we're giving them that option to prepay, so that $50 comes down.
And 20 bucks, well, if they didn't pay last year, so, or two years ago.
That's fuzzy math.
Yeah. I guess, we're, okay, so where I am on this and what I'm struggling with is if it's a single student, you're going from the 425 to 500. If I did my math right on my calculator, it's roughly a 17% increase. If you're talking a family, a family goes from 685 to, with a co-curricular, we're gonna push parking out of that equation, you go from 685 to 885, because you go 50, 50 and 50s, right? Did I get it right? No, I think you're right, 35. Yeah, sorry, E35. So 150 on 885, you're probably looking at roughly just slightly less than 20% increase. To me, that was a big, that's a big increase in one year for when you look at the impact to the budget. And I'm not saying, saying, because I know I got criticized last year because we weren't trying to, we, when we pulled back on fees, I never thought I'd get criticized for trying, pulling, you know, pulling back on fees. But it was, you can do with something with the budget, well, we couldn't even hire a teacher with what was proposed. We still are less than one position. I don't, I, I guess I'm, I'm not there for that, those big of an increase. I think it's too much at the wrong time.
I, I just want to make sure we're not kicking the can down the road. I mean, I look what happened in the town with the water fees. You know, all of a sudden, you know, we've had multiple years where there were no increases. All of a sudden, we get hit with, you know, a 700% increase in water fees. So, you know, I think we still have parity with our neighboring communities. It, it is a little bit of a hit for families, so, you know, Mike, if you are still in agreement that we do need to have some sort of an increase in fees, maybe it's just a question of the percentage now.
Yeah, I, I, no, no issue with the parking, you have him on the parking, you have me in the co-curricular. I'm struggling with when you start to look at the aggregate. Because we're talking about one particular population, right? Where every one of these, and I bet, I, I don't, you said about 400 students participate in co-curriculars? How many students participate in athletics? We've roughly about 60%?
Yep.
So about 500, we're probably talking that the individual.
In a regular year.
So that's 60%, is that duplicate or is that 60% individual?
Individual, you're probably though dealing with a population of roughly 20 to 30% that participate in a co-curricular and a sport.
Maybe a little higher.
Maybe a little bit higher, but then when you hit the bus fee, because I know there aren't as many students who get dropped off here, who. So that's, you're hitting 30% of the high school population with this whole.
So the other thing is, as you look at the impact on the total budget, I mean, we're talking about $40,000 here, which is un-insignificant, but.
That's the problem I have.
You know, it's like, do we, do we create a bigger problem for ourselves? Offer the $40,000 or should we just crank back a little bit on transportation and sports?
It's one of those things, is to me, to me, the bigger, the bigger problem, the individual, I guess you could get me there for the, for the 25, 25, 25 and then potentially 50, because again, the 50, the 50 increase in parking is offset by a 25 in, in transportation, I'm trying to explain, because that's just where I am. I, I could get, I guess, you could get me there, ma, almost on an individual, I'm struggling with the family cap. That, that's a, that's $150. I know David's only less than a dollar a day.
Yeah, I mean, just, I.
But it's still.
Well, this probably opens up the discussion for an idea around a total family cap. Would we want to open that discussion up now? I wouldn't go into that without.
When is our transportation contract renewing? Next year, right?
Next year.
The end of next year, yeah.
Yeah, so.
End of next year. So here, let me pose a question then, because we don't know what that increase will be. But I, given some of the legislative things that have happened, I don't anticipate it going down.
No.
It's gonna cost more to do transport. So with that assumption, should we pause on increasing fees this year for transportation? And then position families to understand that we're renegotiating that contract, it's most likely gonna go up?
So, well, let me ask, potentially, let me ask this que, let me, let me make a proposal a different way. What if we kept the individuals at the 25, 25, 25 and 50, like we've talked about? But instead of the caps being 50, 50, 50, 50, 50 and 50 for the three, what if we did 25 transportation, 25 athletic and 20, and kept in 50 for co-curricular? I know that's gonna really mess up your math.
It's cool.
50 for the.
So the way it would. I need a piece of paper. Thank you. So, I mean, we.
I just, I, I know people listen to this, you know, one way or the other. We all have kids, we're all paying these fees. And, and I get it, costs are going up. You know, my business is up 66%. I mean, yeah, we're, we're all feeling the same thing, but you gotta look at the reality. My question is, do we die on this hill for $40,000 or what do we table it? But I think at some point, I think for the last four years of running this committee, we've never taken, had a real stab at this. We've always kind of put it off, put it off and.
I don't disagree, I'm not trying to say, Jimmy, you think your point about kicking the can down the road, I just think, I don't disagree, but I think it's very valid.
And I, I like your idea, and I'm willing to amend my motion to go with the 25, 25 and 50. So that we would have the 50 cap.
So transportation at 25, increase the family cap by 25.
Right.
Athletic increased by 25, increase the family cap by 25.
And then 50 for the.
And then co-curricular and parking as presented.
Yes.
How do other people feel about that? I, I know it doesn't materially change the number to the budget, but I really struggle when we have families that are still struggling.
I know, and, and I think overall, I look at fees as a way to contribute, right? We're asking, these are specific extras, or not necessarily extras, but sort of to participate, there's always been a standard to be a part of that. So the town's supporting us, they've contributed more to us this year. And I look at it, this is a way that we can help support the budget. So to not do anything, I, I think we need to consider something, right?
I don't disagree, I agree with that a wholeheartedly. The two things I will, the two other, last comments I'll make on this. One, is it still public education? Right, so there's still, there's a point where it's public.
Which is why I think the transportation sort of, to me, falls in that, the others perhaps not, right?
Exactly. And the other part though is, I'll go back, I mean, it's been a while since I was registered to our software, at least four years, I think, five years. But the number of hardships that came in, because I manage the hardships, was more than you would think and it would be people you wouldn't expect. And it's not a knock, and we did the same thing, no questions asked, it was because it's the right thing to do. But you don't, you don't know, right? I mean, we've taught, we've talked about some of the things we did when we did grab and go last spring. And what we were doing, we were, again, it was no questions asked, we were just doing, you know? We talked about some of the things Mike Falco has done, who's sent us helpers for our families, no questions asked. I think the people, I just would hate to put us in a bad spot for a number that is still very solvable.
But is that mechanism still in place, right? So no matter, that 47 may not happen, or the 40 may not happen because of the hardship group that would be a part of that number, right? So it may only end up being 25,000 or something ultimately, because of the hardship support that we'll give.
Fair enough, it's a fair point, it's a good point. I know, I just messed up your math.
I'm marking on my math, you guys continue on. I'm marking over here.
Annoy the community to raise 25,000 dollars.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying annoy it, because people understand the fact of it, but I think it's a question of, is, how much do we? Because to Jim's point and to Lance's point, if, we'd rather do a slower increase than a big increase in a year. Because if we, that transportation number goes up, then that, right? We got lucky in the last transportation contract or the transportation contract, contract for that, because first student bought, somebody else was gonna come in a bit. There aren't many bus companies out there today. I know, I think.
Bit of a monopoly, yeah.
So. More thoughts? Suzie, you've been quiet for the long, a long time.
Well, I'm just listening, because Lance was kind of throwing in some of the commentary I was thinking about, and so were you. So I, I kind of like the idea of the compromise of reducing some of the caps to take some of the burden off the families. But I'm with Jim in that, you know, we probably need to do this a, a little at a time, so it's not a, a big hit to the families. And, but you're right, you know, it's, we're not gonna be having a ton of additional income coming in, but at the same time, we do have to cover some of the costs. So I think, I think the revised idea is, is a good compromise from my angle.
When was the last time we raised fees?
We were in two years, I think.
Okay.
We did, definitely did bus, we definitely did athletic. The premium athletic, I think, is three to four years old.
Four, yeah.
Yeah, because we used to look at, and the only premium sport that costs the most per athlete is gymnastics. And we held off on that one because the number of gymnasts is so low. And it's, you know, it's also a co-op, co-op sport. So that was what we held there.
I remember we had, that's when we had the parking discussions and.
Yeah, but if we're saying fees is only up, what is it, 17%?
Well, yeah.
That's roughly 8% a year, which is.
True. I just think it's a little bit more tolerable and, to my point, is, yeah, we're, we're being good stewards of the town, but we're also trying to balance out the productivity. Other comments? Suzie, do you have anything else? Sorry, I don't want to forget you again. You can't read all of the facial language because of the mask.
I still like Suz's idea about the VIP parking. I think we have Mike.
The only, I will. I'm saying so.
I'll be in that category.
I, because I've got two aspects to it. I have one child who would have been like, yes, I, you're, you're bidding for a parking space. And I have one child who would be nice, and those of you who know my children know which one. Thank you, great, thank you.
You should get a kid to start a Valley business out front, you do okay. Especially on a rainy day.
That's right.
So if I heard you correctly, $25 increase to both the individual and family cap of transportation? The same with athletics, 25 and 25, $50 for parking.
Yep.
25 co-curricular with a family cap of 50. That generates 36,825.
And we're back at the charging for the first, or not charging, that one, I'm lost on.
First, I said first one's free.
First one's free.
That way we don't discourage people from joining a club.
First one, yeah.
Right, that's how I'm hearing it, if you guys.
Yep.
Okay.
And then we want to have some mechanism where we can sort of track the, the participation and.
I do, by the way, your, your point was incredibly valid, I had a daughter who was a mathlete too.
She sounds so awesome.
My daughter who, yeah, who was the best at math, but anyway. But, no, I definitely get that they, they will do it, and you don't want to avoid them getting into that second.
I just worry about the participation and that it's gonna make it go down, and I'm hoping we measure it for the following year.
I agree, because I, there are a couple of clubs that I know I, I'm concerned, I'd be concerned about even at a first or a second, but I think it's all valid discussion. Right, and if we can always change course next year and make a club free, if we think we're with, with bad numbers, because I do think that the clubs are going to be important to social emotional. And one thing, you know, Lance, just for, for your knowledge, right, being new in this first one, we, I don't think we've ever not run a club that there was student interest in. I know we've had discussions on this table after a school year started, you know, moving $2,000 into that line item or having conversations to start a club.
We've had a nail polish club, a Pokemon club, it's just.
But it's, but it's important, it's important.
Baton, remember Baton, that was a good one.
I think it's, I think it's great, okay, so.
We have to amend the motion?
Yeah, on, on the amended motion by Jim, second by David, to, and let me go over this so that Natalie gets it right? Everybody at home.
Natalie, I got it right here, don't worry.
Raise the transportation fee by $25 for an individual and the family cap by 25. Raise the athletic fee by 25, family cap by 25, premium sports stay the same. Institute a co-curricular fee for the, the second fee, I'm sorry, the second club at $25 for an individual with a family cap of $50. And institute a parking fee of $50 to park on the grounds of Pembroke High School. Yes?
That's it.
Suzie, any, they get it all right?
I think you did it.
Okay, okay, so, listen, David or Lance?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
I'm yes. Thank you for the discussion, I just.
That worked out great, because I think we came up with a good compromise and it's, it's never fun, but.
We go back in a year and we look at it.
Right, right, it's not etched in stone.
Did we mess up or did we do the right thing?
Yeah, I just, I, I think it comes down to the impact, the families versus the impact to our budgets. And again, I never thought I'd be in big trouble for not raising the fee.
Yeah.
But it's all good now. Okay, so now on to the budget, so what did that, what does that raise?
36,825.
So if we're 2269.
We're now solving for, I wrote it down. 232, 285.
232.
285.
285.
And those are, that's, that's based on current numbers, that number could technically go up or technically go down.
Right, so those are estimates, right? Depending on enrollments of clubs, sports, ridership, depending on hardships, all of it, well, actually, but yeah.
But we used to.
There are other aspects of budget that are still estimates.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah. We used to call them guestimates.
Who wants to talk about budget? Okay.
Yay.
Yay. So we're gonna talk just a little bit about historical information on the budget as far as us in the town. And a review of where we are with our budget since the maintenance of effort in January. I'm gonna go through some of the admin recommended budget priorities. We haven't had, I haven't given you all the opportunity to look at what was priority two and three and see if there was anything that you all had hoped we'd shift from one up to our priority, I mean, from two or three up to priority one. And then talk about what our next steps are in the timeline. I will front load by saying I also have no idea of the timeline, because I think the selectmen are talking tomorrow again about when town meeting is going to be. From what I've heard, May 11th is off the table, and now they're looking for some sort of Jumbotron outside at some point later, so.
So.
Town elections are still.
Town elections can't, that can't.
You can't move those, right?
Yeah, but the, okay, so, because I was also thinking of our calendar. We still, should at this point tonight consider certifying on April 27th? And then we would meet again on May 4th and then probably take, well, May 11th would be determined if we needed it, if there's no town meeting. So if we take town meeting off the calendar, just, okay.
So just historically, where we, where we are as a district and where we've been as a town, what you, what you have here is a multi-year picture of our school budget in relation to the town budget. It also factors in some of our enrollment pieces. So just for anybody not familiar with how chapter 70 works, it is based off of your October 1 enrollment of the previous year. So the funding for FY '22 is based of, off of the students that you had enrolled as of October 1st, 20, 2020. So our chapter 70, as you can see, desimally increases year over year. Some years, like last year, it didn't increase at all. The number that we're using for chapter 70, 70 continues to be the governor's budget. And there is some optimistic information coming out of the House Ways and Means draft. There's an additional $218 million for education. And the way it, it hasn't been given to us in a town by town breakout as of yet. The way I understand it, 40 million of it is reserved for districts that are experiencing, I understand it, 40 million of it is reserved for districts that are experiencing, that in the fall will experiencing a large increase in enrollment, because their October 1 of this year was significantly lower than they had projected because of COVID. So the money will sit in a relief fund until October, at which point districts could apply for extraordinary relief, for lack of a better word, associated with enrollment. The other 170 million seems to be associated with a formula similar to the Student Opportunities Act. You'll remember a couple of weeks ago, we talked about our Student Opportunity Act funding and our plan to use those 12 for $16,000 here. So to be fiscally conservative, my recommendation is, is to continue to carry the governor's budget, and if we do have any additional information, we would have that by the 27th, and we could adjust if, if the committee felt as though one number was, was more plausible than, than the other. We, as a percentage of the town budget, do continue to increase from last year to this year. Again, the town has, as I'll go over in a later slide, committed about $1.2 million of additional funding to our budget moving into FY '22. Just when this document stands alone on the website, it's important to note that our school budget does not include benefits, employee benefits associated with our employees, such as health insurance, or the pension costs associated with our employees that are pension-eligible. MTRS, which is the largest pension system that we have in education, is fully funded by contribution, so there's no obligation to that, but we do have some employees that pay into Plymouth County, so there is some pension assessment costs on the town side. So where have we been and what are we doing? So when we first gave you maintenance of efforts, so again, maintenance of effort is doing everything you're doing this year at next year's prices, rolling forward for contractual increases, whether it's our transportation contract or our collective bargaining agreements, but every service that we deliver now, delivering it at the same level next year. And that was a little over 36.2 million. We spent some time earlier in March going through some of the required additions, as well as our Level 1 priorities, which I'll go through after this. We have adjusted our Level 1 priorities down a little bit. Again, I'll go through that after this slide. So our current budget request was $36,599,110. There's a series of adjustments that we make to our budget each year, the first one being retirements. We don't have a significant number of folks that have notified us of their intent to retire at the end of this school year. So those savings are a little bit lower than we've seen in years past, but those dollars are associated with the cost of a teacher going out on the highest step of the scale versus a teacher coming into the district at a lower step on the scale. So that's about $14,000 of an offset. Last week, I shared with you the work from Budget Subcommittee around increasing our transportation revolving offset. So even though this year we collected fewer fees than we have in years past because of our adjusted transportation structure with the, with the hybrid learning, we had originally been carrying $60,000 in there as an offset, but there has been some operational efficiencies this year by not having school buses running on those remote Mondays. So it's the recommendation of Budget Sub to use the funds left over from what we were counting as a budget offset last year going into next year. So we've increased that revolving fund offset to 135,000. The next piece is a special education tuition pre-buy. So per municipal finance law, you're able to purchase special education tuition in advance of students attending. That's the one and only thing that you're able to pre-buy or pre-pay for in municipal finance, and you're able to purchase a quarter of private placement tuition or a year of collaborative tuition. So we had originally been carrying $450,000 as our special education pre-buy for next year, but again, with some additional CARES funding available at the town level, there's an additional $170,000 of reimbursement that we'll seek for this year. So then increasing our sped pre-buy to 625,000 for FY '22. So what that does is allows us to lower our tuition line for next year by paying that bill for tuition upfront this year. We also are taking a vocational tuition adjustment. There's some slides coming up talking a little bit about vocational tuition. But we did change our policy four years ago on, or started the process four years ago, of designating Silver Lake as our school of preference. So you'll see from some of the enrollment information that's later in the packet, that South Shore Votech just started taking our students about six years ago. They took a large portion of students as freshmen, six, five, and four years ago. Then we've reined in our policy, and then last year, due to a change in their own admission process, they did not take any of our students. So what you see there for that vocational tuition adjustment assumes the same number of students that we've historically had attending vocational schools with that opportunity this following year, but it adjusts, it just adjusts for the difference in tuition between South Shore Votech and Silver Lake. So it, it's an assumption of same number of students going, it's just an adjustment on, on the tuition costs associated with those students. So that's about $830,000 in adjustments, which brings us down to where we were last week of about $35.7 million. So that, that's about $1,469,000 more than our current budget of 34.3 million. So the next step in the profit, process is identifying additional revenues, the first of those being the Chapter 70 aid formula. Again, we are still carrying the governor's budget recommendation, which is the $30 increase per student, which amounts to $82,200 for us here in Pembroke. The town, according to the last version I've seen of the town manager's budget, has an increase of a little over $1.1 million for us. As you just went through extensively tonight, you've also voted to generate revenue in the form of fees of $36,825, which leaves us solving for $32,285. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about some of the pieces that are in that budget, and then talk about some of the strategies and options for closing that budget gap. So required additions, we, we talked a little bit about this. Mostly, all three of these are part of Jess's Student Services presentation. So the first one is an addition of a paraprofessional, so it's a special education programmatic need based off student IEP and caseload. So it's one of those things that it's not a request of ours, it's a necessity to add. There was, we had extensive conversation around the medical staff here at the high school in particular, based off of our enrollment and the required staffing ratios set out by DESE. And those ratios determine our ability to delegate medication for students on field trips and whatnot. In order to get us to compliance with those DESE minimums, we needed to add an additional .6 nurse here at the high school. And the last one was a newer addition of ELL teachers. Jess talked during her presentation about the vast number of languages our students represent over the five buildings, in the steady increase we've seen in our English language learners over the course of the past three years. So to meet, again, DESE sets recommendations for ESL instruction. Susie's favorite concept of an unfunded mandate is what this is. There's no funding associated with those DESE recommendations. We do strive at, at the district level to meet as much of those recommendations as we can, and oftentimes, that requires more staff than we have. This, this addition here would, would still have us a little short of what DESE is recommending, but a far better level of service to our students requiring it. So our Level 1 admin priorities. We talked about social, emotional, health and wellness of students, not just in a COVID pandemic year, but in the past five or six years, talking about what, what falls to the school as part of the service that we offer for students and families and the support that we offer for them. We've talked a lot about the profile of our students and how's that, how that's changed dramatically over the past five to eight years. This committee has, you know, been a huge proponent of social, emotional wellness for students, and we've been fortunate to be adding in, in that area each year regardless of what our budget constraints are. So for next year, we're looking to add an additional .5 social worker. Currently, there's 1.0 shared between Habimach and the middle school. That breaks out currently as three days a week at Habimach and $2, two days a week at the middle school. This increase would have four and four, four days at Habimach and four days at the middle school moving forward. Brandon talked during his technology presentation about the, the importance of a tech integrator. I think Mark also hit on it during the high school presentation. This is also a position that we had several years back. You'll remember Sarah McNulty, for those of you that were on the committee, first filled this position. She presented several times at school committee, talking about the great work that she was doing in the classroom with teachers to integrate technology. We have had a pretty large influx of technology, thanks to some of the CARES funding that was out there. So we do want to make sure that our teachers have the support at the classroom level to be able to integrate those, that technology into their instruction. Yep.
Just a quick question on this one.
Yep.
Would you, do you think the person for this position is internal, or do you think you're going to have to be external for this?
Um, so I, I think we have a, quite a few staff that would be really great added internally. You know, I have to be honest and say, they, those folks may be a little bit gun-shy to apply, because we had this position once, we deleted it, then we added it back, and then we transferred it to a director of technology. So, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that somebody internal will apply. We do have some really great teachers with amazing technology skills, but it is possible that we may be looking outside just based off of what's happened with the position in the past.
Two questions around that. Number, because number one, I'm wondering if, if we do hire internal, does that help us budget-wise, because this becomes, because the replacement could come at a lower price on the salaries?
There's nobody that works here that would take that job that is already making less than $65,000.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that.
I don't think there'd be any breakage.
You don't think, by the, from the replacement, I'm not talking about the person moving in.
No, well, because we have this budgeted at the lower end of our average salary, so I don't, I don't think there'd be any breakage.
Got it, okay.
Does that have to be a certified teacher?
Yes.
It does?
Yes. And DESE has come out with some recent tech certifications in the past couple of years that didn't exist the first time that we had posted for.
Wouldn't they be able to, if, if we did eliminate the position, nothing...
They can bump, right?
They can bump it down.
Yep, and that's, that is what happened before, but it's a big jump for teachers to step out of the classroom. A lot of the joy in teaching is the kids. And I think, you know, it, it took a lot when it was Sarah for Sarah to, to step out of the classroom, and then just a year later to be told the position doesn't exist.
Yeah.
So, depends how new people are to the district, they may or may not remember that. The next Level 1 priority was an ARC teacher at the high school. So again, this is a similar concept to a learning center, but it's for general education students. I think next year, more so than ever, we're going to need to have some supports in, in place for our students, including our general education students. I included some information in the appendix that Mark shared during his presentation. We did have this position at the high school, it was cut last year, but in the appendix, there's some information around the student caseload that was served in that course, and I would expect that going into next year, that will be even higher, just based off of the learning gaps that we're seeing in some of our students. We reduced our district-wide curricular line two years ago from $150,000 to $100,000 as part of some budget balancing measures that we were taking. Unfortunately, our six-year purchase of Envision Math has expired, and we do need to make a significant investment in some of the consumables associated with that program moving forward. That would facilitate a $50,000 increase in that line. We talked a lot about some of the summer work that happens in the district and some of the new work that we're looking at this summer. Inclusive of that is some of the social justice curriculum analysis. We had originally talked about K through 12 humanities work. We have chunked that work to Phase 1 and Phase 2, so our Level 1 priority is Phase 1, which would focus on some of the elementary work. And then you'll see in the next slides, Phase 2 includes some of the work 7 to 12. Open SIAID is a grant-funded program for our middle school science program. There's a sixth grade component to it that is not part of the grant funding, so that $15,000 represents the professional development associated with our sixth grade teachers participating in the program.
Any questions on the Priority 1 items at all? Here, but just can you remind folks who may be watching, when the two $50,000 increases in curriculum between social justice and just all the overall, that isn't the only money that you use. Could you just give a quick ballpark of, of what we spend?
Sure, absolutely.
So people understand?
Yep, we'll be spending money on traditional MCAS, Common Unit Analysis, that will take place for K to 6 and 7 through 12 in English, math, and science, for the MCAS subjects as well, at least the ones that we get data back for. We'll be doing that work at the end of the summer in order to adjust, as we always do, and in, in ELA as well, we'll be doing that work, so...
So there's about $40,000 of other summer professional development work that, that happens over the summer every year. So some of the benchmark assessments, some of the, the common units. So in addition to the, our prior, our Level 1 priority of the social justice work, that $40,000 is already, that additional is already in our base budget.
This is new money.
Yep, as far as, as far as curricular materials, this additional $50,000 goes in a line that we already have that has $100,000 in that, and then in addition to that, we spend about $125,000 each year on instructional software as well, so. And each of the buildings also has, obviously, money associated with supplies and materials.
I don't want people thinking we're just spending $100,000 on, you know, curriculum development. It's probably all numbers.
Right, and we have several grants that focus on PD and development as well, so those would be in addition to this.
Yeah, and I think also it's important to, even in the social justice curriculum, a lot of, there's some materials that are associated with that, so it's not just in terms of curriculum design and professional development, there's things that need to be purchased.
Absolutely, no, just trying to make sure people understand where we're spending the money and how much we are investing.
The next slide goes through our current vocational enrollment. So Silver Lake, South Shore Votech, and Norfolk Aggie are the places where we currently have students. Norfolk Aggie does not fall under our designating a school of preference. Agricultural schools are a different breed under, under the DESE regulations. So for our students that are looking for a traditional vocational experience, Silver Lake is our vocational school of preference. Our policy, as it reads, is that all incoming ninth graders must apply to Silver Lake in addition to any other vocational school offerings. And then, because the ninth grade is an exploratory year for folks, so students are exposed to a handful of vocations, our interest is having as many of students as possible access that through Silver Lake as opposed to an, an outside offering. But then students do have the opportunity after grade nine to transfer to a different school if they so choose. So you see there, our enrollment this year is, is a little bit lower. Again, South Shore Votech didn't take any of our students this fall, and I think just overall with this, this year, I think folks were just a little bit uneasy of starting in a new school system. So some of our Silver Lake acceptances did not actually end up going there. There was far more than 12 students accepted at Silver Lake this year. Below that, you have our number of current applications. So April 1st was the deadline to let us know of your intent to apply to a vocational or agricultural school. So those are the numbers of applications we've received. So again, because our policy says you must apply to Silver Lake in addition to any other ones, I, it's not, not possible to break out who's interested in Silver Lake and who's interested in South Shore Votech out of that 47. The next graph is around projected enrollment, so taking a look at our applications, taking a look at our students and, you know, being fortunate enough to, to know some of their profiles and know, you know, not all of our students that apply are accepted to Silver Lake. Some of our students are accepted at South Shore Votech and not Silver Lake. And we do meet with families individually around the decision to attend a vocational school. So we, we do look at extenuating circumstances for folks, so even though our policy designates Silver Lake as the school of preference, we do take a look at each of those applications and make sure that the student is, is going to a school where, you know, the placement is right. It's not just about the policy. So I would anticipate a few students being successful in their application process at South Shore Votech and, and matriculating there next year. We also have seven students that are looking to transfer from grade nine to South Shore Votech. Transfers to South Shore Votech are difficult in the sense that a lot of the popular shops are filled up for folks, but I do anticipate some of our students finding a home in the 10th grade at South Shore Votech next year as well. So funding, this is one of the strategies, I think, to, to solving some of our budget concerns in FY '22. We've, we've talked a little bit about the slides, so I'm not going to go through each, each of the buckets. You know, we do have targeted use for that first pot of money, being food services. That second pot of money with the December 31 expiration date is that CARES money that we get through the town, through Plymouth County reimbursement. So again, we've been using our expenses this year in the reimbursement form with them, and we'll continue to do that with the remaining $170,000 that's available. That third pot of money, the federal SR1 funds, the $96,000, we've targeted that work for the learning loss work and achievement gap work that we are hoping to start this summer. We've talked a lot about needing additional guidance from DESE on what they anticipate that looking like. All we've heard so far is that they're suggesting that districts target the time right before school starts next year as opposed to right after school ending this year, but needing to, to kind of get some more information on the criteria of, of whom they're thinking that population is that we're looking to serve, since we don't have any assessment data, and we, you know, we only have local assessment data, we don't have any statewide data. and, you know, we only have local assessment data, we don't have any statewide data. That funding, I just want to point out, does go through September 30th of 2022. So though it is our intent to do a lot of work this summer with students and families, you know, that funding doesn't expire this year, so we can continue that work over the course of the school year and even into next summer if needed. The next grouping of money, the federal SR2 grant, the $360,000, we don't have necessarily a target use for this at that point. We do believe that the learning loss work will, will last far longer than one summer or one school year, so there's obviously a need to use some of the funds for that. I would also advocate for looking at that as a possible solution to solving some of the budget gap that, that still remains. The last SR3 funds, again, we still don't have exact dollar amounts or what the funds can be used for, but we're anticipating anywhere from 789, which is the low estimate. Mike, I think you had like an 847 number. And I would look at using that in the, the following fiscal year to address some of our learning loss needs as well as any of the budgetary issues that come up. The expiration date for that money they just released last week is September 30th of 2024, so it does go out for quite a while.
That has the potential to be more restrictive, at least the bigger of the two buckets, because that could be more for returning to schools, that could be more capital type stuff, even that believes in air conditioning, because that was in two buckets. It was a one, I forget the numbers off the top of my head, it's like a 180 number and a less.
The learning loss and the rest was.
Yeah, so the learning loss number is the smaller the two buckets on that. So say to say, we're looking at, looking at about $800,000 that way, but a lot of that could be good for us because it could help us with capital, but then don't, we can't look at it as, hey, that's going to solve things out.
Is that like free money?
Yeah.
Oh, there's no such thing as free money.
You know what, that's a great, that's a great comment, because none of this is great. It's also, you know, when you look at what we will, would have or will have for additional costs as a result of students being primarily home for almost a full school year, there's money that's going to be needed to get up to where they should be, so.
We have questions, I know we're on the phone, and I apologize, I saw a news story that like 15% of parents are asking to have their children repeat. Have we had that kind of request here in town?
No.
Oh, obviously they said.
We haven't had that, but we haven't, we haven't heard, really, I don't think, from any families. I do think we have a fair number of kindergartners that didn't join us this year that will join us. It's, you know, typically called red shirting, I don't think that's the concept for this year, but.
Red shirt kindergartners.
No, well, they do, so a lot of families choose to start their kindergartner a year later.
Yeah.
It just gives them an advantage. I think it happens more often with boys than girls, just developmentally and, and, you know, growth-wise. We do, I think, have a, a fair number of students that we were expecting as kindergartners that will join us as kindergartners next year as opposed to first graders, but we haven't had a, a push for retention. I think when we talk about some of that learning loss work, we're also worried about, we talked, I think, at the last meeting around, you know, teachers needing a break and being able to staff the various things that we're looking to do this summer, our traditional curriculum work, our social justice work, our extended school year program, our regular summer school. We're also worried about families and families, you know, engaging in that work. And, you know, if you build it, they will come. We're not sure we're going to get families to buy into that because as much as staff need a break, families are, are looking, I think, as a summer, as a break, as well as things start to open up and life returns to some sort of normalcy.
But there are other ways we can use that money throughout the school year to address those gaps as well. So I'm not, I'm confident that we'll get there, but as Erin mentioned earlier, it's going to take more than a year.
Oh, yeah, I would definitely.
So I just wanted to give you an opportunity to look at what was a Level Two or Level Three priority for us. I did not designate Level Two or Level Three, I just kind of put them together on that slide as an opportunity for you all to take a look and see if there's anything that you had hoped would find its way to Level One that hadn't originally found its way there. I didn't necessarily hear from anybody about any of these items in particular. Suzie and I did talk a little bit about the social worker, because we had originally been asking for a 1.0 addition for next year and have scaled that back to a 0.5, having spoken with both Principal Murphy and Dr. McGarregal about their vision for supports for students. They are very comfortable with phasing it in over two years and are just thankful for, for the addition in any form. You know, one of the concerns that Suzie raised was, I think, something that all of us are thinking is that we're not exactly sure what the profile of a student is going to be come September. Do I feel like this gets us to an adequate staffing level? I do. Does that mean that we may not be having a conversation in October that the need is greater than we had anticipated and we might want to look at some outside agencies or bringing in some additional resources for kids? Absolutely, that's definitely something that may happen in the fall, but we have funds available for that through some of the SR funds. So that was, I think, the only one that we had a, a little bit back and forth on, you know, should it be a 1.0 on Level One as opposed to a 0.5 on Level One and a 0.5 on Level Two slash Three.
So with the Level Two and Three priorities, are there any that stick out that people want to have further discussion on, consider it as a Level One for us, any of these?
I know we had a Level One, I'm sorry, on the medical staff thing, and I see a second, I'm just.
Right, so the Level One, or the required addition for medical staff is a 0.6. This would create that being a 1.0. So the 0.6 is all we need to meet the requirement. If we were to add the additional 0.4, it gives us some flexibility with substitute coverage maybe, instead of going to an agency, but it isn't a requirement.
Okay, no, that was my question, thank you.
Lance, why don't you go, and Suzie, I'll go to you right after Lance.
No, I think just knowing we have the flexibility, because I think that social emotional piece is going to be really uncharted territory come fall, so knowing we have that flexibility, I think that's where some of my focus would be.
And I do want to say, I think a lot of the concern that we had early on was our students in Cohort D that we haven't necessarily had eyes on. I'm happy to say a lot of those kids are finding their way back to us. Some of the families that, you'll remember from some of the early school committee meetings that were just starkly against in-person learning, some of those kids have joined us most recently is yesterday for in-person learning. So we, we, we have a small portion of students out there that we haven't had eyes on in any fashion, so I'm less, less worried about the unknown than I would have been a month or two ago.
What's our Cohort D number right now?
Oh, 8 million, no. So there's, I think, 82 at the secondary level that are in Cohort D, and there is eight, six, seven, twenty-four, less than 80 at the elementary level in K through six, so the numbers are coming down.
Suzie, any, any comments or questions or things you want to bring up on the Level Two and Level Three priorities?
Yeah, I, you know, with the social worker piece, you know, Erin, thank you for kind of highlighting our conversation. I thank you again for taking the time when we were talking about that. I guess as we're talking about, you've got 80 out there in Cohort D, are there any plans prior to the actual start date of the year to work with some of those students, especially the ones that you haven't had any eyes on? Just to get, you know, I, I'm, I think I'm asking a question already and the answer to, I think you're already.
Yeah, so we have a traditional, we have a traditional, a traditional transition program for our kids, whether they're going up to seventh grade or going up to ninth grade that need just a little bit of extra time in the building to get familiar with it. I would expect extending that opportunity to some of our Cohort D students regardless of grade level this year, for them to get into the building when it's mostly empty and get kind of reacquainted with being in the school building, because I, I do, do believe that that is an anxious point for, for many of our students.
Okay, that, that's good to note, just recognizing, you know, there are some that this process was probably more traumatic than for others, and so that's, that's really helpful. Thanks for opening up to everybody. I think that was really all I had, because again, you highlighted our conversation, so thank you.
Are we going to be able to do sixth grade orientation to middle school? I know last year we couldn't.
So, this, the, so last year, we were, we did do the sixth grade step up. It happened prior to COVID, so there was a February tour of the building for our sixth graders. Obviously, we weren't able to do any additional ones after that. I would anticipate being able to have our students tour the middle school this spring before, before they.
Thank you.
We probably won't feed them lunch, and that's usually one of the biggest drivers at the middle school, is the excitement around lunch, but we are, you know, strapped at six feet trying to get the kids that go there to have lunch, so I think it'll be a shorter tour, but absolutely getting them in the building. PAC TV, Julie Thompson was here last week talking about doing some drone tours of the buildings for folks so that kids can get a kind of lay of the land. I thought that was a great idea as well, so.
He's wanting to practice flying that drone in the building.
Stay away from my sprinkles. Yes, Suzie, you have another question.
Just recognizing from the music perspective that, you know, I know the Point Two was enrollment-driven, that's why we went there to begin with, but recognizing the program got hit because nobody was really sure what it was going to be like, and Gwen felt confident that we would bring, you know, we would be able to make up what we kind of lost with that, but are there any plans from that particular department in addition to like the band camp to kind of rejuvenate that enthusiasm, to really ensure that we make it up with the participation that we lost this year?
Right, so I think between some of those opportunities that Gwen talked about for the spring with the concerts that gets kids excited about participating in the band, some of the band camp, we've talked with Gwen about pairing some of the arts offerings as carrots as part of the summer learning loss work. So you're coming in for math in ELA, but maybe there's some art and music that you can participate in as well to make it a little bit more attractive to students and families. As far as the Point Two music teacher at the high school, you'll remember when we talked about this last year, what that did was decrease the number of sections of piano lab or guitar lab that we were able to offer here. The program, the, we still were able to offer both of those offerings in each semester. There's, there were just fewer instances of it in the schedule. The program of studies and course selection work has started here at the high school, and Mark and I talked earlier today about this in particular. There's already 10 musical electives that we'd be running next year at less than 10, 10 students, so I do think there's still capacity within what we're offering for students to be able to access what they're looking for. So at this point, I, I would still continue with that as an enrollment-driven reduction.
Terrific, and I, I agree. I think you and I have talked about this a lot, so thank you for that.
Any, any other discussions on Level Two and Level Three? The last slide is.
The last slide is budget neutral, I think, you know, I just tried to think about this document standing alone on the website, and it hit some of the points, Mike, that you talked about. We do do traditional summer work that's already in there, made into the effort budget. Over the course of some of the presentations, there was some capital items that came across that you, we all talked about last week as part of our capital request, talking about some of the SR money and, you know, some of the grant funding that we have out there. So it's really just to capture some of that conversation. All that we have left on our list, so we did meet with the Board of Select, the Select Board.
Select Board last week.
Last week to talk about budget, they didn't have much work that they were looking for us to do. I think they were appreciative of us coming to them with a close-to-balance budget, and for the part that wasn't balanced, having at least some sort of plan or lever to get there.
I think it was a good discussion, we had the Chapter 70 discussion, but you were bringing that up, so it was, it was a good discussion with that group, you know, in fact, we just got Dan, John, and Tracy, they all have had questions, you know, individually or during the meeting, I thought it was a really good discussion. And I think from my standpoint, working with that, the Select Board over the years that they've had, the people who have been assigned to work with us on budget or whatever, that the relationship has been strong and remains strong. And it's, to me, it's important, you know, personally that we have it, because I've been here in years when we didn't, and they're not fun budget years. I don't know what it was like in COVID, but there have been years where the Select Board and the School Committee were at odds, and same thing with advisory, and we all had, listen, we have disagreements, we, right, we don't agree on everything, but we at least have a good respectful working relationship, so I'm thankful for that. It was a good meeting. So now we're at the point where we are looking to solve for a $232,285 in order to get the balance of roughly $35.5 million that we'll take to a public budget hearing, we'll have a discussion with that. There was, or before we get to where the number really is, how much of the 232 would you charge against SR? While we could sit here and say, yep, we're going to do it all and make it easy, that's probably short-term thinking, just your thing of kicking the can down the road.
It's just not all there.
That creates a problem, because we already know, I think Lance, you talked about having the flexibility in the fall, right? If we, if we needed, that could be extra money. David, you talked about a couple of things that we get into next year, that could be SR money. If we go and just say all of it now on the 232, that's kick, truly kicking the can down the road and not giving us the flexibility we need in fiscal year '22, in fiscal year '23. This pandemic, the results of the pandemic or the impact of the pandemic is not a fiscal year '22-only issue. We're going to see this through '24, '25, I can't get my years right, '22, '23, and probably '24, which is why you have the foresight of putting a '24 deadline on spending some of the money. That said, what should we be thinking of for the 232?
So, I mean, there's a couple ways to look at it, putting it all on SR2 is definitely an option. I, I would probably target half of the SR2 money for, for it, so about 180, towards the budget gap, which leaves us a little over 50, 52,000 to solve for. And, you know, how, how would I advocate for doing that? There's still a couple of things that could break in our favor over the course of the next two weeks before the public budget hearing, one of it being the House Ways and Means Budget actually being released, so we can see it. Another being, we, we have a 0.6 math position here at the high school that we didn't fill just based off of student enrollment in COVID. You know, Mark is running the numbers to see if we can not fill it moving forward, so that would be a, a reduction of about 30, 32,000 or so. And then anything more than that, I would tell you that, you know, in the past, we've used some of our circuit breaker funding, so circuit breaker is money that we're fortunate enough to get in one year and use in the following year. There's a lot of districts that use it as the payments come in, but we have looked at that first quarter payment as, you know, a potential way to do some budget balancing. So I would say that, you know, my comfort level with, with, you know, earmarking 20 to $30,000 of that first payment for the rest of the budget cap, I think would absolutely be doable for us.
So if we look at it that way, and just doing the math, and I'll throw this out to the committee, we're looking at roughly 232. 180,000 is from SR, 32 from the math position, and 20 from circuit breaker is 232.
And something that could break in our favor elsewhere, to be right.
Right. But if we go into two weeks from tonight with that, are people comfortable, understanding that if we get potentially additional Chapter 70, my recommendation or suggestion would be to reduce the circuit breaker number? Because that's, out of all the numbers that Erin mentioned, that gives us the most flexibility.
Yeah.
Mike, can you repeat the circuit breaker number you're, you're looking into this tally?
Sure. Absolutely, so, so to get to 232, it's $180,000 from SR2, the high school math 0.6 position that was not filled, and $20,000 for sped pre-buy or circuit breaker for next year. That would get us to 232. My suggestion is if we get additional Chapter 70, we first lower the 20, because number one, that's money we haven't traditionally gone into the current fiscal year. We've done it a couple of times. We've done it a couple of times in tough years, but we haven't done it consistently.
Right, so we had targeted to do it last year, but because there was operational savings associated with our change in, in operating model, we didn't have to.
But we were, we were dealing with a million-dollar special, a million-dollar issue mostly driven by a special education issue. So that's why we were, were choosing to do it, but.
And starkly, what have we seen in the difference from the, the governor's budget to when Ways and Means releases the budget? Has it, has it been a consistent trend on a certain dollar amount? Am I asking that question right?
So we have usually, what, what our experience here has been is that the governor's budget used to hover around $25 per student, and the House Ways and Means Budget was where we were getting our $30 a student. And I think two out of three years, it landed on the $30 a student. There was one year where it resorted back to the $25, and there was an adjustment that we did at the Fall Town Meeting. So usually, the, the governor's budget is the floor, but again, just reading what I've read about the House Ways and Means Budget, I'm just not sure that PemBRA qualifies for that additional funding that's plugged in there, both for the enrollment piece and some of the Student Opportunities Act. So if we were to get additional funding, it would be in that second bucket, the Student Opportunities Act-type formula, and for us, you know, that could be maybe $10,000, so. But again, 10,000 less than we'd be needing to offset from somewhere else.
All right, thank you.
Other comments? Everybody comfortable with that approach? I don't think we need to vote on anything at this point, because we'll vote on the number, but if everybody's comfortable with that approach, that will, we'll vote into the next two weeks, Rick?
No, I think that sounds good, and I know, Erin, it's, it's a lot easier dealing with a number like this than what we've dealt with in the past.
Right, but I think it's important, and I'm not sure that there's a whole host of people still watching this at 9:10, I think it's important to understand, and I probably, if I said it once tonight, I've said it 10 times, this year is, is an anomaly.
Anomaly.
An anomaly, I can't even say it anymore. Our budget is only where our budget is at because of the opportunities given to us this year through CARES and through SR. So we have had tremendously difficult budget cycles for the past few years, that's not over for us.
1.6 million dollars was submitted for CARES reimbursement, 1.4 has been paid. So those are big numbers, that's 5% of, right?
Right, just don't want people, next year, when we have a budget problem, to say, well, you didn't have a problem last year. And, and, you know, there have been folks that have been tuned in and listening to us, and our budget problem didn't go away, it's just solved for this year.
Right. It's, it goes back to when we had the, what was it?
ARRA.
The ARRA, the American Recovery Act after the, the financial crisis, it's 2007, 2008, it's the same issue all over again. You know, maybe to a lesser level, no more as we go forward, but back then, we weren't dealing with learning loss. We were just dealing with, with loss of funds because of loss of tax revenue. This is a, this is a different, a different animal, and it's a much more challenging issue to, that we have to solve for, so. With that, we didn't have anything else other than to say we are off next week for school vacation, we meet again the 27th, the most likely May 4th, and we'll plan after that, after that, mostly depending upon Town Meeting. mostly depending upon Town Meeting. And one thing, Erin, we talked about earlier this week, just so everybody knows, because we talked about it last meeting, is the Board of Education was, they did not vote on the Commissioner's recommendation, or did they?
Right. So they did not hold a special meeting to vote on the cancellation of MCAS. Their regularly scheduled board meeting is Tuesday, April 20th. So next Tuesday, they will vote on it.
Yeah. So just so we're clear, as we're told a couple weeks ago, a week ago, the Commissioner has appealed to the Board of Education, who ultimately determines, determines it. He's a member, right? He's a voting member?
No.
He's not a voting member. The Secretary of Education is a voting member. So, sorry, that's the government officially, everybody else is appointed. Is, they'll vote on the 20th. So when we get back, we'll know, we'll know the 20th.
It's important, too, to just remember that juniors may elect to still take that MCAS if they choose to, because it does put them into the competition for the John and Avogent scholarship.
Yep. Great.
Do we have executive session?
Yeah. With that, I'll take a motion to go into executive session pursuant to chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy for negotiations of personal services contracts and for collective bargaining. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on legal position of the school committee as declared by the Chair.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Jim. Sorry, you beat you to it, Suzie. Is there a second?
Ooh, cut right.
I need to, motion by Jim, second by Suzie. Lance?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, everybody. Have a good week.
Suzie, I'm just going to move to the other room, and then I'll Google Meet you in.